Good evening, everybody. It is six o'clock on August 19th. Welcome to council chambers. We will start, if you please stand, with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Tovar.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
If you please remain standing, we have an invocation by Bishop Mark Fulmer.
Dear God, we are truly grateful to be able to gather here in these chambers as citizens and leaders. We are especially grateful for our mayor and council members, as well as all the other employees who serve the city in any way, and we ask you to please bless them with wisdom and understanding. We're especially grateful for our first responders, and we ask you to please protect them as they service and at many times put themselves in harm's way. And at this time, we ask you to please bless these proceedings with your guidance and love, and do so in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, City Clerks report on posting the agenda, followed by roll call.
The agenda was posted on Friday, August 16th, 2024, at 8:12 a.m. Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Armandares?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
Mayor Blankley? Here. All right, under orders of the day, we have none. Under employee introductions, we have some. We'll start with Leanne, followed by Heba, followed by Scott.
This is Paul Jimenez, and he has worked for the City of Gilroy for over 17 years, and he has even more years than that working in the construction industry. And I am excited to announce his recent promotion to Senior Facilities Maintenance Specialist on August 1st, 2024. Council approved this position as part of the reorganization of the Facilities and Fleet Division, and having a Senior Facilities Maintenance Specialist taking the lead on projects and day-to-day activities is a piece of what is making this division successful. Paul began working for the City of Gilroy in 2007, supporting the Facilities Maintenance Division. He takes great pride in his work maintaining various city facilities. I don't think there is a building that the city owns that Paul has not worked on in some capacity. When the police facility opened, Paul learned every nook and cranny of that building and to make sure it would be properly maintained to last a long time. He is a resident expert on this particular facility and has been cross-training other members of the team for succession planning. One of Paul's goals in taking on this position is to share his experience and knowledge with other members of the facilities team. Paul has incredible troubleshooting skills and does not shy away from any project or task. He has experience in electrical work, fabrication and welding, drywall and painting, plumbing, concrete work, and equipment operation. He is also a skilled locksmith. Paul is a longtime Gilroian who attended Gilroy High School. He raised his family here in Gilroy, and he and his wife Pam love the Gilroy community. Please join me in congratulating Paul on his recent promotion. Paul, we appreciate you, and we thank you for your service to the City of Gilroy, and we know there's more years to come.
(Applause). I'm not big for words, so I just want to say thank you to Leanne and to Walter for giving me this opportunity. As I said, I'm lifelong Gilroian, and I'm just trying to keep things, we just try to keep things working. That's all we do. So, thank you for the opportunity, and...
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you. (Applause).
Honorable Mayor and council members, good evening. I am pleased to introduce Karen Gammel, a management analyst who joined the Public Works Department on August 12th. Karen comes to the city with a robust background in capital improvement projects, and she possesses experience in managing multimillion-dollar budgets. As part of Karen's impressive background, she worked for neighboring municipalities. Karen possesses a Bachelor of Arts degree in Peace and Conflict Studies from the University of California, Berkeley, and a Master's degree in Higher Education Administration from the San Jose State University. Additionally, she added a Master's Certification in Construction and Facility Management from the University of Michigan to her repertoire. Karen has been a Gilroy resident for over 20 years and is ecstatic for the opportunity to give back and serve her community. Outside of work, Karen enjoys being a sports mom and is grateful for Gilroy's commitment to use sports, which helped propel one of her sons to play college basketball. The Public Works Team is pleased that Karen chose the City of Gilroy to use her valuable skill set and abundance of knowledge. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you so much for the kind welcome. Even during the interview process, I've been so impressed with everyone I've engaged with the city, especially the Public Works Department. I think they're outstanding, and I look forward to many years of contributing to capital projects or budget finance in any capacity as we develop and grow the position. And equally, I look forward to any opportunity to present again and engage with City Council and the community. So, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I was wondering who that was sitting there. Now I know. Thank you.
(Laughter) Thank you so much.
I am also excited to welcome Eric O'Connor. Eric joined Public Works' the Parks Team as a Maintenance Worker One under the supervision of John Sousa. Starting on June 10th, Eric recently moved from Sonora to Hollister. With a solid background in masonry and construction, Eric has quickly made a valuable impact on our Parks Team. For example, his expertise played a crucial role in the success of our latest project, installing concrete sidewalks for the new prefabricated restrooms at Christmas Hill Park. Outside of work, Eric enjoys spending time with his family, riding dirt bikes, snowboarding, and playing hockey. Eric is thrilled to be part of the City of Gilroy and is eager to grow and develop his career here. We are also thrilled to have him join our team. Thank you, Eric.
Like Paul, I'm not much for public speaking, but I am very grateful for the opportunity to work here, and I've really enjoyed this past two and a half months working here, and I look forward to continue working here and building a better, helping out the community the best they can. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, and welcome. Okay, it's Division Chief Summers who's going to be introducing our next employees.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Hello, Mayor, and City Council members. Back in early February this year, we hired three new firefighters that got out of our JFA. One of them is currently at the park fire with one of our OES engines, and I don't know if you read in the article, had an opportunity to do a, set you out of a pool from a pool drowning. So, he's up there doing the good work with the rest of his crewmates. But it is my honor tonight to introduce the two that are here in town. This evening, it's my pleasure to introduce Adrian Calderon, a firefighter/paramedic who recently completed his training and evaluation period. Adrian grew up in East Palo Alto, lived in the Bay Area his entire life. Growing up, he saw a lot of violence in his neighborhood. Exposure to this violence pushed him towards the decision to become a first responder. Watching his local fire department respond to calls and helping people inspired him to become a firefighter himself. Adrian went to College of San Mateo, where he obtained his Associate Degree in Fire Science. He worked for Rural Metro in Santa Clara County as an EMT and paramedic for eight years, while also working part-time as an EMT/paramedic instructor at Foothill College for five years. Adrian currently lives in Patterson with his wife and two sons. In his free time, he loves to play with his kids, and he also likes basketball. Adrian is excited to bring the skills and experience to Gilroy Fire Department, and we are excited to have him join our team.
(Applause).
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity. I'm excited to be here. It's been my goal to be a firefighter, so I'm hoping to bring my skills and grow and learn with the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
All right, next, it's my pleasure to introduce Eliezar Pagatatan, a firefighter/paramedic who also recently completed his training at the same time. Eliezar was born and raised in the Tenler Lauren District of San Francisco, where his mother taught him the importance of helping in the community. This involved volunteering in the soup kitchen and food banks. He has found that the fire service aligns with the values he learned as a kid. He completed his Associate of Arts in Paramedicine at Foothill College and his Associate Degree in Fire Technology at Los Madanos College. Eliezar previously worked as a paramedic for the county of Santa Clara. Eliezar resides in San Jose with his wife and two daughters. He's excited to become a member of the Gilroy Fire Department. We're excited to have him also join our team.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and the City of Gilroy for the opportunity to allow me to be a firefighter for your city, and I look forward to serving the community.
Yay, thank you. Okay, thank you, and welcome to everybody, and congratulations. All right, under ceremonial items, we have none. Under council correspondence, we have none, so we move on to presentations to the council. And Pat Benson, will you be doing the Parks and Rec Commission report? Okay. This is the annual presentation from our Parks and Recreation Commission.
(Audio loss). Yeah. Okay. Got it. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Blankley and members of the City Council. My name is Patricia Benson, and I'm the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. It is my pleasure tonight to provide you with a brief presentation of our work plan status for the past year. Our other commissioners are Teresa Graham, our Vice Chair, Luis Ramirez, Doc Davis, and Sam Bozo. We are currently at five commissioners. However, we are chartered to be a seven-member commission, and hopefully will become a full commission in January. For our work plan review, Arbor Day. The city holds a Tree City designation. To maintain that designation, an annual Arbor Day event is held and council proclamation prepared. At the end of December 2023, Arbor Day was hosted at the Hecarpass Dock Park adjacent to the Heartland subdivision. It was well-attended by several commissioners, city staff, and a few council members. In 2024, the location of the next Arbor Day event will be held at Rainbow Park, and the date and time will be confirmed at our Parks and Rec Commission meeting tomorrow evening on August 20th. We also participate in citywide events. The Parks and Recreation Commission supported the Breakfast with Santa in December 2023. We were the cooks. In May 2024, the Parks and Recreation Commission led to Bike to Wherever Day at Christmas Hill Park Levy. Brought up last year by former Chair Luis Ramirez, were to study opportunities for Parks and Recreation Services to have dedicated funding sources. Meetups were held with staff from the cities of Watsonville and Morgan Hill. For certain, the needs are great, and further study is still warranted. We worked with the Gilroy Library to bring about a Story Walk to a park or trail. You can see the picture of an example from another city. For those who are not familiar with Story Walk, it is an educational activity that places illustrated children's book taken apart and displayed along a walk or a trail. It gets families outdoors with their children and reading. The library brought this grand opportunity to the city, and the decision on the location should be decided at our Parks and Recreation meeting tomorrow. Stories will be changed approximately twice a year. Commissioners are assigned to four parks each, and we report back to staff on our monthly commission meetings on items such as tree issues, playground condition, anti-graffiti, or damage. If the situation is urgent, we notify staff right away, and we don't wait. Our big project this year has been assessing potential pickleball locations. The Commission has diligently been involved in a study process led by Bryce Atkins, including developing a rating and ranking system to determine the most feasible city-owned sites to construct pickleball courts, and we're currently evaluating several locations. Accomplishments. We made a recommendation to the City Council to accept a grant received by the Gilroy Rotary Club for the purchase and installation of sensory panels for users at the Donald Elvis Prieto Park on Monterey Street, example in the picture above. I also attended the official opening of the park. It was well-attended, and users enjoyed the panels and other offerings. We host the annual Parks and Recreation Staff Appreciation Breakfast in September. Commissioners provide a complete breakfast to the staff. The date for the 2024 Staff Appreciation Breakfast will be decided at our meeting tomorrow. Just want to kind of tell you about these pictures. This is for signing, Commissioners Ramirez, myself, and Graham for walking and biking for the Bike to Everywhere event, and we have Sam Bozo, Commissioner Ramirez, and Terry Graham at the Fix-It area for Bike to Wherever Day at the levy. Our mission statement, I know it's been read before, but I think it's worthy of reading again. The Parks and Recreation Commission of the City of Gilroy is committed to enhancing the quality of life for its citizens by promoting, planning, acquisition, development, and sustainability of parks, trails, cultural, historical, and other recreational areas. The Commission embraces wellness and recreation, park safety, and inclusiveness for all ranges and abilities because parks make life better. To keep our mission statement viable, capital improvement budgets, such as the already-budgeted Civic Center Master Plan, are critical, as well as a seriously-needed update to our Parks and Recreation Master Plan and Trails Plan need to be budgeted in its next CIB. I met with Director of Public Works and was informed that the cost of such a master plan would be in the range of $500,000 to $675,000. Hopefully, the Parks and Recreation Commission and staff will continue to attempt to achieve that important milestone in the next CIB. I wish I was here to do that. My final remarks, I want to thank the City Council for the opportunity to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission for the past seven and a half-plus years. It's been a labor of love, and my most precious accomplishment during those years has been the organization of the Friends of Gilroy Parks and Recreation Foundation, a 501(c)(3) organization that was accomplished with Commissioner Terry Graham and former Commissioner Angela Reinhardt. Still in its infancy, it will continue to blossom and benefit the city for years to come, and I will still be involved. Thank you very much.
Aw, thank you, Karen. Excellent report. Thank you for all of that. Sorry of all the things. I guess we were a day early, right? A lot of the things. Do council members have any questions before we move on? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to 4.2, which is Presentations, Public Comment on Items That Are Not on the Agenda. And my board shows eight speakers. Is that in agreement with yours, Beth?
Yes.
Okay, so that's three minutes each. I will call your names, but it's only as good as your penmanship was for Beth to enter. So, if you could please make sure you're sitting up in the front row. Josephine, followed by Joni, followed by Jean. This is the microphone right here, so Josephine is first. Is there a Josephine? Yeah, try not to lose, yeah, so if you could just please be all ready to go if you know you're speaking. Who is Josephine?
Actually, I'm not Josephine.
Okay.
I'm not Josephine.
Okay, then you can introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenny Silva. My colleagues and I all live in Santa Clara County and are volunteers with United Sovereign Americans, not spokespersons. United Sovereign Americans USA is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens, sharing the alarming information about our state's voter roll database. Research of the state's voter database was done through hundreds of hours of research conducted by highly-qualified and credentialed data teams. An analysis of the 2022 election researched by the highly-qualified data teams using only official data provided by California election officials indicates serious issues with compliance of federal law. We are here to present to you and the public the results of the aforementioned analysis showing the votes cast, counted, and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution and under the law. We are not here to cast any blame or aspersions on any elected official. We do not suggest any candidates in any race have wrongly won or lost their races, nor do we advocate for the overturning or rerunning of any past elections. Tonight, we will present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. Though you bear no direct responsibility for anything in the electoral process, we come to you, our closest elected representatives, for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution and take the necessity for valid elections seriously by adding the resolution to your next meeting agenda. Our next three speakers will read the resolution in three parts, and our final speaker will conclude our presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so Beth, was that a speaker that was one of the eight? Yes. Okay, so now it's Josephine?
Hi, good evening. My name is Josephine Kawanami, and I am here to read into the record for the first portion of the USA Resolution. Resolution for a Legally Valid 2024 General Election. Whereas it is recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections. Whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of elections are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate, National Voter Registration Act 1993. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than 1 in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system, Help America Vote Act 2002. Whereas the analysis of California 2022 general election has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including 5,886,198 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database, 2,776,939 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations, 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast them, 2,776,849 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracies for a valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election was 90. Certification as defined by law is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of the 2022 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Thank you.
Thank you. Joni M.?
My name is Joni Murphy, and I am here to read into the record the next section of the USA Resolution. Whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Whereas the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. One, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenge 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Three, hand-marked, secure ballots similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witness after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean R.?
Hi, excuse me. My name is Jean, and I am here to read into the record the last section of the USA Resolution. Six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to file canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Seven, a national institute of standards and technology compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensics, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Eight, if the total of unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. Nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved that the Gilroy City Council members stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here, we implore the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, California Legislature, federal legislators, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both California Secretary of State and County Registars of Voters to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Teresa Higginson.
Good evening. My name is Teresa, and I am here to conclude our presentation. What you heard tonight is a powerfully-written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. The resolution delineates meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. Your written copy cites many U.S. Supreme Court precedents and federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. Large numbers of Californians have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. Official data show these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. The cost for not fixing the enumerated problems is immeasurable, so we urge you to put this resolution on the agenda for the next City Council meeting, where you can vote to join us in support of fair, honest, and valid elections. The United Sovereign Americans website showcases our initiatives nationwide and features some extremely informative election videos. We encourage you to visit unifordfreedom.com and learn more about our organization and our goal to restore valid elections throughout our country. That's unite, the number four, freedom.com. One more time, unite, the number four. One more time, unite, the number four, freedom.com. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Jim Wyatt.
Good evening, council members. It is always an honor and a privilege to speak with you. I am here again to speak in favor of the upcoming November 5 ballot measure dedicated to providing essential funding for public safety through the quarter cent sales tax. I want to give the public additional information for their consideration when voting for the needs of public safety. As, as the former fire chief and longtime resident of Gilroy, I believe that this ballot measure is crucial and vital step towards supporting the critical mission of our fire and police departments. By voting for this measure, our community will add more firefighters and police officers to the field for a quicker and safer responses to emergencies. This measure will also supplement our understaffed yet vital dispatch center, ensuring timely response of emergency services when you need them the most. We need our Gilroy Fire First Responders to continue to be front, first line of defense for all medical and fire emergencies. The South County area continues to particularly be vulnerable to delays due to shortages of the county's advanced life support ambulances and the closing of hospital specialized services that we depend upon. In short, the lives of our medically compromised and injured residents are at increasing health risk. You have heard me say it before, we have reached a crossroads. Without sustained and reliable funding for public safety, your firefighters and police officers cannot keep up with the emergencies in which they are dispatched. As citizens and residents, we have the right to, to expect our city continue to provide superior lifesaving services. Supporting public safety demonstrates our commitment to a healthy and vibrant community. However, we are fast approaching, and at times, we are already at the point where the lack of resources can cause unmitigated destruction of property, unnecessary suffering of the injured, and needless loss of life. Your firefighters and police officers need the public's help if they are to continue their critical mission. I am asking all voters of this fine city to support the dedicated members of public safety so that they can continue to provide you with excellent service now and in the future by voting for this critical and crucial ballot measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is James Sooner, followed by Zachariah, and then Elaine. You could all please be ready.
Good evening, council. James Sooner, longtime builder developer. This is now my third time appearing in front of the council requesting an agenda item for my greenfield project. I've outlined this in writing. This is the proper path of appeal for me to get council input, and the only way I can modify those conditions of approval is through the council. So this project has never made it onto an agenda without the council initiating it. So I'm requesting that you initiate this to be placed on a future agenda. So to recap, the three issues are, when I was overcharged for my impact fees, I was charged an additional $55,000. I, I tried to get that clarified, have not been able to do so. We need to modify the bicycle path condition of approval, cannot be built. If you guys want, you know, you might agree, you might disagree, but there's no way to permit that. It's inside of a flood zone, it's inside of the HCP. It, it's problematic, to say the least. It connects to a trail system that the city abandoned 15 years ago. Jay Boxa identified it as an unfunded liability, so you stopped maintaining your own trail pass. Herman Garcia came out, walked the property with me, says that there is a legal action against the city on that same section against the Creek Bank, and that there's no way any development can occur in there. So it's relatively simple once we get it on the agenda. I need your input, obviously, at that point. And then if you disagree, great, then I'll take a different path. But I shouldn't have to appear in closed session before we exhaust our open session options. And this is what you are. The council is, you know, a oversight committee. And this is my path to get justice, so to speak, or, or to get resolution, quite frankly. At this late stage of the game, I don't know what my impact fees are, or when they're going to be charged, or if and when I have to build a bicycle path that can't be permitted. So I'd appreciate your cooperation. See you at the next meeting.
Okay, Zachariah. Followed by Elaine.
Firstly, I want to thank God for waking us up today to another beautiful day of life that was not promised, and I want to thank each and every one of you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, and people of the community. I'm here today to talk about our city's unhoused citizens, and one of the most dangerous times of the year for them, winter, with October, November, and December being the most crucial months. In 2023, Gilroy's average temperature dropped to 35 degrees Fahrenheit, with the warmer nights being 38 degrees and some nights getting as low as 30 degrees, all past the hour of 10:00 PM to about 7:00 AM. The U.S. annual average for deaths due to the sheer cold is 700, with the county of Santa Clara experiencing 48 deaths in 2013 and 33 in 2014, with San Jose having lost two lives as recent as 2022. With that being said, even one person's life being cut short is too many. With winter quickly approaching, immediate action needs to be taken to help everyone. Governor Gavin Newsom recently passed a law that started in 2024, a fast slash temporary solution that enables local churches and nonprofit college campuses to open their doors to the, to house people for the night. Another lengthened solution is starting a tiny home community with a purchase of at least two acres, which depending on the location can range anywhere from 50,000 to 100,000 per acre, with each unit being made for about $20,000, with a public restroom slash, slash shower facility and public kitchen with a constantly stocked food pantry, with hired security and rules to keep everyone prospering. The required sum for such a project is estimated to at least $1.5 million. $1.5 million doesn't seem like it can be done in a few short months, but where there's a will, there's a way. Gilroy has over 70,000 citizens. If each and every person donated $30, a dollar a day for a month, that'd be over $2 million. That is definitely possible, with some citizens unaccounted and some donating more. It is, it is a small sacrifice for humanitarian honor, giving the unhoused a foothold to get out of the cold and start working towards a permanent residence. I urge you, council members and citizens, to consider all options and make this dream a reality, so the heartbeat of Gilroy cannot just be revived but thriving. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Elaine, followed by Ron.
My name is Elaine Gooding. I grew up here in Gilroy from 1960s. My parents had fruit stands on the old blood alley off of Day Road. My children were born here at the old Wheeler Hospital. I've been residing at the Garlic Farm RV Park, not the tiny home, but they came in. 15 years I've been there. We have a problem with the homeless. Currently, right now, there's seven of them sitting over there that are unlicensed, unlivable. There's garbage everywhere they're bringing and coming over our fence. They're probably about 100 feet from my backyard, or my little side RV that I have. There's a problem with trash, with rats, with mice, with ants, flies, garbage everywhere, everywhere you turn. And this is as you're coming in, you know, from Hollister. So all the people that are, you know, going to San Jose and stuff, they see that from the freeway. We have to live it. It's coming over our walls. Last October, on the 30th, we woke up about midnight. There was an explosion about 500 feet from parks, the RV park spaces from 80 to 89, and there's about 20 kids there in that corner, 100 feet from these children. This massive explosion happened because it was a meth lab. The fire department didn't call it that, but we know what happened because we would see it all night long. There's over 20 kids in that corner. And how are they being protected? By a little wall we've built and the city has put out, and then the place behind there, that painted wagon. There was 125 homeless people living in there. There's three different colonies of cats. They're all coming over the walls to us. We pay, we're licensed, we're legal, we have to be, otherwise we get kicked out of there. I've lived there for 15 years. I love my place. And I'm sorry to say that it is, it distracts me because I grew up here. You know, this is my community. I love where I live. And it's sad that we have to go. There's people that are older than me, and I'm in my 70s. But yet, we're still surviving. We can manage, we've worked jobs, but yet these people over there taking advantage of it, and we have to clean it up. And I don't know if my time's done or not. They've broken water valves out there into the city water, and I just wish somebody would take a little more stance on, on what's going on with that. And I'll end it with Isaiah 32:18 from the Holy Bible. And it says, "My people shall dwell in a peaceable habitation, and in sure dwellings, and in quiet resting places," sayeth the Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron.
Good evening, Mayor, council, community. I would really like to thank you folks for coming and speaking today. I have a personal issue with exactly what you're doing. My youngest son is now 39 years old. When he was living at home, he applied to get a, to vote by mail, and he continues, he's been married and gone out of my house for several years, but I continue to get ballots for him. I've returned the ballots to the original address they came from, saying they don't, my son doesn't live here anymore. He's married, he's living in another state. But nothing ever changes. There's no way that a person that I know of, that a person can find out how to get somebody off the rolls. So this is a very important group for our quality of, of voting to keep our, our voters, our, our elections safe and qualified. So I really appreciate you guys, and I'm going to contact you soon. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, closing public comment. Okay, and moving on to item five, which is reports of council members. Council member Bracco. Council member Armandares.
Thank you, Mayor. So no meetings during this past couple weeks, but I do want to announce that this Sunday from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM at South Valley Middle School, the San Jose Earthquakes and the San Jose Earthquakes Foundation will be hosting a youth soccer clinic with free events, including a soccer training with San Jose Earthquakes, free and open to the first 150 youth who register. They'll receive a T-shirt and a soccer ball and, and a good time. So that's this Sunday, 2:00 to 4:00 PM at South Valley Middle School.
Council member Marks.
No report.
Council member Hilton.
Thank you. From the Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee, the Better Bus Stop program is a multi-year program that installs new amenities and makes site improvements at their 3,200 system-wide bus stops to improve conditions for riders. As a component of the Better Bus Stop program, bus stop balancing optimizes bus stop placement to improve transit, operations, and access. In 2022, VTA completed nine routes and will continue until all routes are completed. Several of the Gilroy's bus stops were included. Better Bus Stops is a program that enhances the rider experience by installing new or replacement amenities and improving bus stop conditions. The program's main source of funding comes from the VTA's 2016 Measure B Bus Stop Amenities Funding Category, with additional funding from state, regional, and local funding sources, amenities like shelters, lighting, benches, bike racks, and trash cans. Partnerships with cities are essential for improving access to public transit. The Better Bus Stop team coordinates regularly with member agencies, member agency cities on incorporating transit improvements into city-led streetscape projects and conditioning new developments to improve transit, transit stops nearby. Better Bus Stops does not directly contribute to or reduce greenhouse gas emissions. However, providing amenities and improving conditions at bus stops improves the transit rider experience and may influence an individual's decision to ride transit. GHG emissions are likely to decrease as more individuals choose transit over driving alone. Lastly, I'd like to welcome all the youth back to school. We are encouraging our school community to leave the car at home and choose to walk, bike, or roll to school. This helps teach our children safe walking and biking skills, reduces traffic and air pollution near our school, and helps children get more physical activity. If you need suggested walk or bike routes, then ask your school for their official map that was created by the Safe Routes to School Task Force and funded by Public Health. Thank you.
Council member Klein.
Yeah, I just wanted to do a shout out for the Gilroy rodeo and the great event last weekend, and I just want to say, great job. They continue to improve it, and great, great, uh, great event.
Council member Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I won't repeat what customer Klein said, but yeah, I, I agree with that. I also want to thank the GDBA for conducting our downtown music events throughout the last couple months. I think last Thursday was tremendous. I think someone said it was the largest crowd that we've ever had, so congratulations on that work. I just also want to acknowledge all our GUSD classified staff, students, and community members who attended the Step Into Education Conference at the County Office of Education. This is for individuals that want to pursue or further pursue their career or education in going into teaching, so it's great to see so many folks from Gilroy, so I just want to commend those folks for taking the next step.
Thank you, and yes, the rodeo was a huge success this year. I want to report on last Friday, though, I attended what we call an all-mayors meeting. All the mayors of Santa Clara County are invited by Mayor Mahan. We do this quarterly, and this Friday, what we discussed were, really, two, we discussed many things, but the two, two big topics among our cities. Prop one, which you may all know passed last spring and is supposed to bring 10,000 beds for mental health facilities to the state of California. That is something that only the county, only counties, not our county, not just our county, but counties, can apply for those funds because it is the counties who then have to staff those facilities. So I want to report that our county, Santa Clara County, is participating in the first round of funding requests. They are asking for 100 beds, and they are considering four potential sites that they haven't determined yet, but 100 beds over four potential sites that our county is considering. Next was the retail theft legislation that the governor recently signed, and what we discussed was how that is not the same thing as Proposition 36, just so everybody knows. The retail theft legislation is meant to offer law enforcement new tools to bolster ongoing efforts to hold criminals accountable for smash-and-grab robberies, property crime, retail theft, and auto burglaries. Proposition 36 is a different thing on our ballots in November that includes stricter punishment for repeat drug and theft crimes. Lastly, this coming Monday, I will be in Morgan Hill together with Morgan Hill, Morgan Hill Mayor Mark Turner, and Zoe Lofgren. For us in Gilroy, we're going to be getting the money, getting the grant money for the new crosswalk that's going to be at the Gateway Apartments. And our city administrator will be talking to us about that in his report, the details of when we're going to see that crosswalk. All right? That's my report. Consent calendar. First, I'll ask, is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Okay, then if we have a motion to accept, if nobody has anything to pull, by council member Klein.
Second.
Seconded by council member Armandares to approve the consent calendar.
Council member Bracco.
Yes.
Council member Armandares.
Yes.
Council member Marks.
Yes.
Council member Hilton.
Aye.
Council member Klein.
Yes.
Council member Tovar. Mayor Blankley.
Yes, that passed unanimously. All right, under item seven, bids and proposals, we have none. Item eight is public hearings, we have none. Item nine, unfinished business, is a selection and appointment of our youth commissioners. We had a lengthy interview process at our last meeting, you all know. Yes, there were some 24 applicants, but fewer than that did interview. We have five seats. Four are full two-year terms, and one is a one-year term. So I'm going to be calling on each of you individually for your selections. That will include the one-year term, and then four for the two-year term. Okay? Beth, you want to add something to that?
How are we going to designate, if they can designate which ones for the one-year term and which ones are for the four-year?
I think what I'll do is call out first for the one-year term.
Okay.
And then I'll go to the four for the two-year term. I could do it the other way around. I could do the four, the two-year terms first, but I don't know that it matters. Yeah, I'll do it that way. And then because we have a lot of applicants here, and they were all great, they're always great, you know, I don't know how hard it may be to get four votes, you know, for anyone because there are so many. So if for some reason in this first round, we don't get four votes for the ones, then of course, we'll go at this again, but what I would suggest that, that I do is eliminate ones who only got zero or one vote in the first round, so that we're not having to keep starting over. Otherwise, we'll just be starting over and over each time. Okay?
Do you think it would mathem-
Do you think it would, mathematically, it would, it'd be best to, just for us to pick the five, and then after designate one? That we, we'd be more likely to vote? More of us would vote for?
To some, it might matter which one has the partial term. Because we did have seniors applying. And so to put a two-year term on a senior is, you know, not likely. So I think I'll ask first for our choices for the one-year term. And then move on to the four for the four-year. Okay? So I'm going to do this in the order where you, I'm going to start with you, Dion, and come this way. So asking for the, the one-year term, who would be your choice?
Jeremy Vu.
Can you, do you have this in front of you or no?
No.
No, okay. So you don't have a number. Jeremy Vu, okay? Okay, got it. And then Councilmember Armandares?
Daniel Diaz.
Okay, Councilmember Marks?
Alfred James.
Councilmember Hilton?
Alfred James.
Councilmember Klein?
Alfred James.
Councilmember Tovar?
Jacob Ortega.
Okay, and I'm going to say Alfred James. So he gets, he has four votes if I get that correctly. Right? Okay, so Alfred, who is a senior and an incumbent, you can finish it off. All right. All right, so now, we'll start with, so I'm going to ask you to name four people. Okay, for the, and you can certainly name one of the ones that just, that didn't just get it, if you'd like. Okay, so Councilmember Bracco?
Sofia Romero.
Okay.
Lizeth Gomez. Eva Santos. Jacob Ortega.
All right. Councilmember Armandares?
Jacob Ortega. Anna Nguyen. Raylene, is it Rattan or Raffton?
Wait, say the first name again?
Raylene.
Raylene, yes.
R-A-T-T or R-A-F-T?
Her last name. Raylene, R-A-T-T-A-N.
Yeah, Rattan. Karine Rodriguez Sandoval.
Wait, sorry. Guy with a G?
Karine, K?
Oh, with a K?
Karen?
Yeah, Karen.
Oh, got it. That's four.
Yeah, and?
No, that's four. You can all vote for four. Okay? Councilmember Marks?
Anna Nguyen. Karen Sandoval. Lizeth Rodriguez. And Raylene Rattan or Rattan.
Raylene Rattan. Elizabeth Rodriguez. What number is that, Beth? I don't see Elizabeth Rodriguez.
Elizabeth, Elizabeth, L-I-C.
That's Gomez.
Well, yeah, but she's Lizeth Gomez Rodriguez.
Okay, fine, but that's the right one. Okay, that's four. Okay, Councilmember Hilton?
Anna, Daniel.
I'm sorry, which Anna? Anna Nguyen?
Nguyen.
Okay.
Um, Daniel, Dominic.
Daniel Diaz.
And Sofia.
Dominic Vu. And Sofia Romero?
Yeah.
Okay. That's four. Councilmember Klein?
Anna Nguyen. Charlotte Lee. Anish Mishra.
Anish Mishra?
Yeah. And then Karen Sandoval.
Karen Sandoval. Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Sure. First, Sofia Romero. Second, Ryan Nguyen.
Hang on, Ryan, okay, got it?
Third, Eva Santos.
Got it?
And then fourth, is it Karen Rodriguez Sandoval?
Okay. One, two, three, four. Okay, and mine are Anish Mishra and Anna Nguyen and Charlotte Lee and Jacob Ortega. Okay. So I show Anna Nguyen got five. And Karen Rodriguez Sandoval got four. Did anybody else make it?
Jacob? Was he at three or four?
He got three. Because, I mean, Dion, you, yeah, yeah. He, he had, he has me, my vote, your vote, Rebecca, and Dion's. That's three.
Mayor, can I switch one of mine?
Sure.
Yeah. From Anna Sandoval to Jacob Ortega. So that would give him four.
Okay, from Anna Sandoval. Anna Sandoval?
Or Eva, sorry. Ava Santos, I'm sorry.
Ava Santos.
Apologies.
Okay. To Jacob. Okay, then that gives Jacob four. So we need one more.
Who has, who has three?
So who else has three? Right, so Sofia Romero has three, but wait, she might not be the only one. Actually, she is the only one, right, Beth? Sofia Romero has three.
Okay, I'll change one of mine, Lizeth to Sofia.
Okay. So then Sofia has four. So then?
Yeah, I'm happy to do the same.
I don't think it's necessary. Look, we have four now. So we, we've already done?
Just give her the whole, give her the five.
Okay, so we have Alfred James, who's getting the one-year term. And then for the four two-year terms, we have Anna Nguyen, Jacob Ortega, Karen Rodriguez Sandoval, and Sofia Romero.
Yeah.
Does that agree to what you have? Well, I'm waiting for Beth to. Okay. So congratulations to the ones who got appointed. But I can't thank enough everybody, whether you're here or watching later, all of the youth commissioners who, who applied, who took the time to apply, who care enough to try to participate. This was an incredible number, number of people interested. So thank you all. Okay. All right, that brings us to Agenda Item 10, which is Introduction of New Business. Award a contract to Pearred Power in the amount of $172,903 for the purchase and installation of two Pear Tree solar EV chargers and adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2025 budget. Bryce?
This is the Mayor and Council. So the city was awarded two energy efficiency grants totaling $432,521. They came from Silicon Valley Clean Energy as well as an energy efficiency and conservation block grant from the Federal Department of Energy. The Silicon Valley Clean Energy Grant was written specifically for a Pearred Power Tree, sorry, Pearred Power, Power Tree Solar Electric Vehicle Charging Station to Ford F-150 Lightning Pro Trucks and was a project that was included in the adopted capital improvement plan, Project 8910. The EECBG grant has a limited list of allowable uses, one of them being EV charging infrastructure. And so a voucher was selected for that program. So some of the benefits of solar EV chargers, reliability, so is the solar charging insulates against power shut-offs that may occur, reduce costs, we don't have any major infrastructure. For example, if we wanted to install a physical on-grid charger here in City Hall, there's likely a need for a transformer installation, which would be half a million. Independent locations, so they're self-contained, they can be placed anywhere, and flexible deployment, so it's not a permanent installation. They can be located where needed. And then additionally, it can be added to electric grid later if desired. The unit will charge up to its storage levels, then will only charge at the rate of solar generation. The unit may not keep up with demand. These is, these are both pilot programs. I will discuss in a little bit. The purpose of the program is to determine viability of the technology, and that's the key of the grant funding. Monitoring and tracking software aid in assessing the system use and help govern policies and procedures fitting its capabilities as we experience it. So the purchase, the city received a quote for two solar EV chargers. The Clean Energy Grant is specific regarding what can be purchased. As I mentioned, it lists these items specifically. And under the city's purchasing policy, procurements are funded by grants for particular materials or services are exempt from competitive bidding. The additional unit that we are getting under the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant is purchased under a standardization allowance. So it's, it's a way to have any highly specialized equipment be standardized in order to help us with, you know, training personnel and how to maintain it, as well as, you know, maintenance of supplies available to handle those repairs quickly. So the total amount, $172,903, is for two units. The two units are $70,000 each, $140,000 total. We looked at Sourcewell and GSA advantages to make sure the price we're getting is, is good. As a Sourcewell, the amount is $78,413. And if we got through the GSA advantage program, it's $89,000. So overall savings for both units, even under Sourcewell, we're still saving $16,800. The remaining $32,900 of the total request is for taxes, installation, shipping fees, and then software network support fees to help with that monitoring software. These are required regardless of which of the procurement options are above. So the Silicon Valley Clean Energy-funded unit is to be deployed at the Corporation Yard, city use associated with the Ford truck purchases. It is a pilot program. The data is being shared with Silicon Valley Clean Energy as part of their grant-making requirements reported out to evaluate this technology for other member agencies as well. And then the EECBG-funded unit will be placed at City Hall in the parking lot. It's for, both for city and public use. It's a pilot program with data reporting to the Department of Energy. The unit includes a credit card reader and signage regarding use of the system in the quote, and software to monitor unit performance. Regarding the public use and establishment of fees, the public unit will take payments for use, a rate that will be established that is intended to fund repairs and future replacement. Since it's not connected to electrical grids, no power costs are included in that rate that we will be proposing. If eventually added to the PG&E for power, then electricity costs could be incorporated for a full cost recovery. Staff will be developing a proposed, developing a proposed rate for future council consideration and will be added to the user fee schedule. And then we'll be recommending amendments as we gain experience in this technology and how it's being used regarding its level of use somewhere. As part of this, we're also asking council to adopt a budget amendment. So the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Grant funding and expenditure was budgeted in fiscal year '24, and the EECBG is a new grant. So requesting a budget amendment to reappropriate the '24 funding and add the new EECBG funding to bring it to a total of $432,521, located in the Capital Projects Fund. Alternatives, council may choose not to award the purchase of Pearred Power. This isn't recommended. Again, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Grant is very specific about the equipment that we're authorized to purchase under it. And then the EECBG unit should be the same for standardization. The fiscal impact, $172,903 for the solar EV unit purchase. And we're asking appropriation for the full, full two grant funds, two full grant fund amounts for $432,521. So as a recommendation, adopt the resolution and award the contract to Pearred Power, granting the city administrator authority to execute the agreement. And that completes the presentation. Happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Bryce. Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Bracco?
Bryce, I'm not clear on, is all of the money coming from the grant? Or is the city putting in some money?
No, all the funding is grant.
Okay, so nothing on the city?
Yeah, nothing on the city at all.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, looking to public comment?
No public comment.
All right, closing public comment. And then looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilmember Armandares and seconded by Councilmember Bracco to approve.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that passes unanimously. All right, 10.2, Special Event Permit Process. Thought we'd have more people here for that, I tell you. Because I know we have a lot of people who have gone through the special events permit process and I would think have opinions on what we should be doing here. So Victoria, thank you for being here and giving us the staff report.
Absolutely, in just one moment, Mayor, while I pull that up. Oh, thank you. It's one way to turn 30, right?
I know, you had to say that, didn't you? I was going to let it go, but.
She reminded me how old I am.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. Victoria Valencia, Economic Development Manager for the City of Gilroy. Over the last few years, we've seen a notable increase in special event applications, with these events growing in both size and complexity. Tonight, I'll be providing an overview of our current special event process, the resources allocated, and the challenges that have emerged since the ordinance was first adopted. Staff is seeking council feedback and direction for staff to develop updated standards and fees that better address our current needs. A little bit of background, the special events ordinance was adopted in 1970. We created Chapter 13A of the city code. It was amended in 1977 and again in 1989. And in the last 35 years, it really hasn't been touched. The current code pertains to meetings, assemblies, parades, sound amplifying systems, and live music. And per the ordinance, the police department is tasked with administering the permit process. This shifted to community development and, most recently, to economic development. The various city regulations may apply depending on the nature of events. These are some of the events that require a special events permit. If an event is going to use any street, alley, park, or any other public or private grounds in the city, if there's an event with assembly of 49 people or more, a block party, blocking of any streets, a concert, large-scale meeting or fundraiser, live music, car shows, outdoor festivals, parades or processions, outdoor gatherings with use of sound amplifying systems of any kind, outdoor public events with singing, dancing, DJs, choir, et cetera, or meetings or assemblies in places of business occurring where not otherwise permitted. Where it's not required is funeral processions, meetings or assemblies in residentially zoned areas, garage sales, there is a separate garage sale permit for that, sound amplifying systems used on private property where the sound produced doesn't carry beyond the property line, and radios and other sound amplifying systems wherever used when the volume doesn't exceed the volume of normal conversation. So this slide needs a little bit of, a little bit of explanation. This, this is a, a display of all of the events that have happened over the last three years, specific to the downtown area. I'll explain a little in just another slide. But the purple is August 1st, 2023 to July 31st, 2024. August 1st, 2022 to 2023 is the red. And the green is '21 to '22. This information was pulled from a site called Placer AI. The city contracted with Placer back in May of this year for economic development research and to get a better understanding of the foot traffic at large events and to get a better understanding of the foot traffic at large events and events that are happening in the downtown area. So, you'll see these spikes, these purple spikes. Those were three events that occurred last year. We have the Gilroy Chamber Car Show, the Cars to Mall Festival, and the Downtown Holiday Parade. And we pulled this information to show how the event attendance has grown just over the years. So, in 2021, the Garlic City Car Show was around 4,000 people. That number grew to 10,000 last year. The Cars to Mall Festival, just in the last year, went from about 4,000 people to 11,000. And the Downtown Holiday Parade in 2021 was a little over 6,500. 2022, it rained, so there were a little less attendance that year, but last year, they were back up to around 12,000. And something important to note there is this is attendance in the downtown area throughout the entire day of the event, not necessarily specific to that event. Another thing to note before I move on to public safety, the number of events throughout the city has continued to increase with 36 events approved last year. 28 have been approved so far this year with more fall and holiday events coming up. And events are also expanding into residential and industrial areas of town, not typically designed for larger gatherings. Moving on to public safety, in the late 80s, when the code was amended, the types of tragic events that we're seeing at community events today nationally was rare. And today, unfortunately, they're all too common and must be considered and planned for with each event. Over the past few years, staff has observed that large event organizers, which are forced to use volunteers to manage traffic barricades for the protection of event participants and roadways, often provide either inadequate level of barricading of streets or barricade, but they don't have the capacity to move those barricades in case of an emergency. Additionally, with the increase in violent incidents at events, the need for a greater law enforcement presence and security preparation also increases. With the events becoming larger in attendance, they can also become more targeted, or more tempted, more tempting targets for such threats, as well as a higher potential for violence and property crimes with the higher density of people in a particular area. To help address this issue, staff is evaluating the following. City managed barricading, which this is an option being considered to have staff manage the placement and the maintenance of barricades. This will ensure that public safety is maximized, both in protecting the event participants from breaches by vehicles, but also in having the barricades, let's see, sorry, but also having the barricades of a nature, of a nature that emergency responders can easily pass through, or staff for relocation if police or fire apparatus need to access the site. In this option, the cost for staffing would be borne by the applicant, but it would assure a level of effectiveness in protecting public safety. There's also a recommendation to increase the review time for departments relating to public safety and to evaluate event applications. Currently, the city code identifies 30 to 60 days for review and approval, and so one option would be to increase this range, setting new minimum timeframes for smaller events and larger events. Next, on to insurance. When the increasing, with the increasing levels of threats and incidents to special events, as well as the increase in litigation and large awards, combined with the joint and several liability provisions under California law, the need for adequate insurance coverage and conditions increases. The increases are to protect taxpayer funds from litigation and loss due to the activities of community and/or private groups that occur on public rights of way or are conditioned by the city to protect the community. Special events are required to carry a minimum of $1 million liability insurance, though additional insurance may be required due to the nature or size of the event with the City of Gilroy named as an additional insured. This is required for both publicly accessible and private events on public property and in the public right of way. To help protect the city, the following changes are being considered. This change, these changes, modifying the insurance requirements for special events would standardize insurance requirements based on key factors. There could potentially be a risk assessment, which could be conducted to dictate if adjustments to insurance requirements are needed. The baseline requirements could then be adjusted depending on event factors. An example of this, a small event or parade may have different requirements than a full-day event with moderate attendees, or a multi-day event, or an event with a large number of attendees. Additional baselines and adjustments may be triggered if automobiles are involved, alcohol is served, or if the, if the event prevents greater risk of injuries like carnival rides or other such factors. The insurance would also need to include a primary and non-contributory endorsement and a waiver of sub, subrogation endorsement in favor of the city. And Leanne McPhillips, the risk manager, is here, and she'll be able to answer any questions you have related to insurance at the end. Impacts on city infrastructure and services. In addition to the public safety impacts, these larger and more frequently occurring events further impact the city infrastructure and services. Larger events are triggering, triggering road closures, often several blocks in the downtown area. And these road closures occur typically from Monterey Road, from Third Street to Seventh Street, all of the side streets down to Eagleberry and Railroad, and they're usually from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM to allow for time for setup and cleanup. This removes access to street parking for downtown businesses outside of event hours and creates a major impact to traffic flow for commuters and residents. And there's not currently an established fee or guideline related to events. A couple of options to consider would be city staff to manage the barricades at a cost to the applicant and, or to create event templates and event zones to better define the area. There's also a significant staff time spent on traffic control plans. The plans that are received are often missing key information as they're not prepared by a certified traffic engineer. It could be the streets or the alleys missing in downtown, or they're putting, let's see, they're putting detour signs where a detour sign doesn't make sense to go, all of those sorts of things. So, due to timing and lack of understanding of the requirements, staff is often creating the traffic control plans for these events. Couple of options to consider, staff is evaluating a requirement for the applicants to contract with a qualified traffic control engineer at the applicant's cost, or for the city to develop that plan, again, at the applicant's cost. Our current code requires permits to be submitted not less than 30 days, nor more than 60 days before the date of a proposed event. Most applications are received at the 30 days, or they're received earlier but are incomplete. This creates challenges for staff to be able to properly review the application and for the organizer to make changes based on conditions that might be required. There are also permits from outside agencies that may have longer review times than the city does. The applications are currently reviewed by the Economic Development Department, Community Development, Police, Public Works, Fire, and Risk Management. Permit procedures and conditions aren't always followed or understood. An example of this would be the neighborhood notification form. We require event organizers to go out and get signatures for 100-foot radius around the event, and staff doesn't have a viable way to check that those addresses and the signatures are actually valid. And events are often operated by volunteers with a turnover occurring between various events, so some of the procedures that were in place for the year before aren't necessarily carried over and carried out by the next person. So, options to consider again would be event templates, event zones, and some training and outreach. And this would be to help event organizers as well as to streamline and improve the efficiencies of events. So, the event templates would be an option where the staff would create and update at certain intervals, templates for certain types of common events. The templates contain, would contain proposed operations and administrative checklists and guidance to have elements of the event pre-planned in accordance with requirements. This would help reduce the workload for event organizers, streamline review, and potentially reduce staff time and issues that may occur during events. The event zones would be similar to the templates above. Staff is evaluating this option. We would identify zones and we would select them in a manner to allow for various scales of public events, but design them in a way to lessen impacts to traffic, public safety, and other potential mitigations. This would help event organizers with compliance, significantly reduce staff time and review issues, especially combined with an event template, and may help reduce workload for the applicant. Training and outreach, we're looking at this option for more direct engagement with event organizers to aid in awareness and compliance with special event permit applications and processes. Excuse me. This would include communication outreach, provide intermittent training for anyone interested in how to apply, and updating handouts and guidance materials for those interested in applying. With all the staff time in reviewing the application, creating conditions, monitoring compliance, support during the event, and also residual cleanup and fixing damages from events, significant investment of taxpayer-paid wages and supplies are attributable to special events. However, there has yet to be a comprehensive fee structure set for recovering such costs. In the current fee schedule, the following are the only fees that the city has associated with special events. Police, which is the provision of special services at 165 per hour, this has been mostly subsidized at 55%, and that's for any event where the police chief thinks there would be a significant public safety benefit. Public Works has a community event banner fee of 711, and Fire Prevention has a special event inspection fee of $420 plus 50% after hours and travel time. And that really only applies if they're going to be tents that are larger than those 10 by 10 tents. How many times can I say tent in one sentence? To lessen the impact to the taxpayers, staff is assessing the option to develop for council consideration a comprehensive set of fees designed to fully offset the cost of special event permits. And as part of this fee structure, council may desire to establish a policy for fee waivers in certain situations or for certain events or functions. All right, next steps. Following city council direction, staff will draft an appropriate set of rules, requirements, and fees to regulate special events and return to the city council at a future, at a future meeting. And the alternative would be for council to decline to direct staff to update the current process and draft regulations and standards for special events. So, there's no fiscal impact at this time. There may be impacts based on direction received from council, and staff will analyze the impacts and include it as part of the next report on the proposed adoption, if directed. And that concludes my report, and if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you, Victoria. Okay, I do, I know council members have questions or comments. I don't see anybody on the board, so I'm looking, I don't know.
Maybe I'm on the wrong one.
I'm not. Yeah. Are you on 10.2?
I'm on 10, well.
Okay, I'm just gonna go down, I'm gonna go down the row. Okay, so, Councilmember Bracco?
Yes. It, it seems to me, looking at this, that the city's trying to make it where we won't have any more events. Just gonna price them out. You know, most of the, the organizations and stuff that have events in our downtown, they can't afford these kinds of fees. And I mean, you know, 700 and something bucks to put the banner up? 400 and something for them to go look at a tent? I mean, I, I think this is outrageous. And I, I, you know, if, if we as a city want these events in our city, then we gotta take some of it on. And, and the insurance thing, it seems like you're leaving it open to whatever staff feels like saying it has to be, because there's no number in there, where right now, we have a number of a million dollars. So, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
So, I, I'm just gonna say to that, that my, my understanding is that we're supposed to give the direction tonight as to what it is we want to come back. So, whether it's insurance, whether it's fees, whether it's whatever, that's what we're here to do. Staff, staff is not supposed to make those decisions without our direction.
That's, I, I was saying that, I think it's bad, and I don't...
Well, this is not, this doesn't have any of our direction yet, that's what I'm saying. That's what we're here to do tonight. It doesn't have our direction. And I, I mean, I, I think we all would want to know what the staff time cost is, whether or not we end up saying, yeah, that's something we want the, the, the user to bear, but we would wanna know what that is, just like with recreation, when we had that big report done in 2019. We need to know what our recreation programs cost, even if we then choose to subsidize them. You know, that, that's fine, so. And the other thing we have to address is the quantity. 36 events is a lot, and there are residents and businesses who I'm sure we have all heard of, heard from in terms of the number of events. But that's all stuff that we're here to hash out and direct staff to come back with what we as a council majority would like to see in the policy. Councilmember Armendaris?
Thank you, Mayor. Myself having a significant experience organizing events, and not just in Gilroy, but in surrounding cities and such, I think staff here has been incredibly easy to work with, and the process doing it over the years has become second nature, right? And I, I appreciate the staff support and, and such for the staff that, and the volunteers to help put it together. Some of the ideas that you mentioned that I really like, including the option for the city to manage barricades, it's true. I think folks are more apt to respect barriers and barricades put up by the city versus volunteers who can be of any age and who, again, don't have capacity to, to move them and such in, in case of an emergency. I think that's a, that's a good idea because of the safety of it, and, again, because of how much more likely people are to respect a barrier that's an official city barrier or, you know, the, one of the trucks that they put to block the way, things like that, I think are a good idea and a good way to show off our new vehicles. An increase in the application timeframe, I know for the Taman Festival, they start the application process almost a year in advance to make sure that everything is checked off and that there's no new regulations that need to be. So, I think that is something that folks can manage without, you know, smaller nonprofits or other groups can manage without it having a fiscal impact and gives time for the training and orientation that you mentioned, for folks who are learning the ropes or for them to deal with any changes that they didn't expect. Increase our additional insurance coverage, I think that would be a safe thing for the city to do. It would, it would be more expensive, but also we have to be protected from liabilities and things. I think that's reasonable. So, one thing, though, that I've never understood is, and you pointing out that there's no way to verify the signatures, is the signature, the request, right? So, instead of a notification like I think Morgan Hill does, is they, they mail something out to all the property owners within 100 feet, is the city requires the, the event organizers to go to residences and businesses within 100 feet of, of the event location. And so, all the events that take place 3rd to 7th, it's a significant amount of businesses and residences, and measuring it out 100 feet, not knowing who the business owner is or who can sign off, not knowing who owns the property or who rents there, if there's multiple tenants, that part has always been really cumbersome and, and it feels unnecessary sometimes. And also, not everybody agrees to sign, right? Or, or is in favor of another festival or another, you know, closure of their road, of their street. So, I've seen alternatives to that, and I'd like us to explore more of those, more ways to notify people, because, you know, it's important to have everyone's input, but also we have to do it in a way that's fair and, and makes every, or is covering due diligence, right? That we do our due diligence to notify all the business owners and property owners and people who live downtown. That's, that's all I got.
Okay. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Victoria, can you explain something to me when you say one of the options is to consider event templates, training and outreach, and area zones? I mean, is this not something that we're, that we're currently doing? Or is this something that we're thinking of doing?
Thank you. So, we have an event application that lays out what we're looking for with traffic control plans, what our minimum requirements are for events, what should be included on event diagrams, and unfortunately, sometimes we don't get the information that we're requesting. So, with a lot of these events happening specifically in downtown, we'd like to standardize, a recommendation would be to standardize these event templates. Often what's happening, too, is these groups that are coming in, some of them want to do 4th to 6th Street, some of them want to do 3rd to 7th Street, some of them want to do 3rd to 4th Street. So, that's where these event zones would come in. It would help us to better prepare if we are going to continue with staff providing these barricades and traffic control. We can better prepare for these sorts of things.
Okay, thank you. I, and, Mayor, I know that we're here to kinda give staff direction, but I would agree with Councilmember Bracco. You know, I, I think when we say that 36 events is a lot, maybe it is, but we wanna be considered a recreation destination, right? And I think the more events that we have, I mean, in just those three events that you mentioned, we're looking at 33,000 individuals that showed up downtown, right? I mean, we have a potential helping our businesses, and by putting these, I've asked folks, how much do you think you'll pay if you have to put an event? And honestly, no one has any clue, right? Because of all, I mean, we don't have things that are structured and be able to say, this is how much it's gonna cost us, right? One of the things that I would think that we as a council can consider, obviously, is, again, looking at the cost and maybe, you know, we, we pull something out of the general fund, something to say, you know, we're gonna utilize this fund annually for events, because the more people that we bring in downtown, the more people we bring here, the better our businesses are gonna be. You know, and I think many of us know there's several businesses in downtown that are barely making it or may not make it much longer. And by having as many events as possible and making it easier and, you know, I know, I understand some of these groups have been doing it for quite some time, but I know there's a lot of different folks who wanna do something, but, I mean, they're given so many different, you know, information, so much different information, they decide to walk away from it. So, I think that we need to simplify this, but also we need to make an investment here to say, okay, how many events do we wanna see? How can we help these folks through this process? Because if it's gonna cost me $10,000 to do an event, I might not have the funds for that, right? So, it's just something for us to consider. I'll have more to add later.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to Councilmember Marks, because I said I was gonna go in a row, and then I skipped because I didn't see her name here, so sorry. Councilmember Marks?
I guess. First of all, I'm curious to know how these numbers are tracked.
First of all, I'm curious to know how these numbers are tracked. You know, when it's a whole daily activity, I wanna know, like for the holiday parade, how, how was the 12,000 tracked? Because I can see that becoming an issue with the dollar amount for an insurance policy.
So for purposes of this, this report, we just pulled the full day. We do have the ability to go in and go hour by hour and track how many people were in attendance at a specific time. Placer AI tracks cell phone data, you know, when you're downloading a new app on your phone and you agree to all of those different things, so you can get into your app. There are over 500 apps that they track, and all of the information is confidential, scrubbed of any personal identifiers, and then put together on their data analytics platform.
Okay. I have to echo also what council member Bracco said. If we make this event too expensive, people are gonna stop doing them because we're gonna be running into the red. And I'm very, very concerned about that. I'm also questioning 36 events. I mean, I'm sitting here thinking, okay, GDBA did 10, and I'm, I don't see where you're coming up with 36 events. That just seems very high. I'd like to know what some of those are. And I really feel, I agree, you know, some $111 to put up a banner, it always puzzles me because these people are on salary, they're doing the work. And now they're getting paid this other amount on top, and things are just kinda getting blown up.
It's cost recovery.
Cost recovery, yeah, exactly. It's cost recovery, where it's the person who's paying for that salary. So I would like to see, you know, personally, the staff come back with the amounts and how much all this would cost, but even though you put in the time to come back with that report, by no means do I want staff walking away tonight thinking that we're gonna rubber stamp this and say, oh yeah, whatever you come back with, that's perfectly okay with us, because it's not okay with me. And I need to make sure that it's gonna be reasonable and doable for the people. And I have one question for council member Armandares. In all the cities that you've worked in, how do you compare City of Gilroy with the other cities? Are they easier, well, are they easier to work with as far as the amount that, that they charge or?
Yeah, much easier than Morgan Hill, much easier than Hollister and San Juan. Yeah, San Juan requires like a building permit inspection, they charge for that, which is outrageous, because it's nothing, there's no building being built.
So it's Gilroy cheaper?
Gilroy's much less expensive, and police department is much more easy to work with as well. Yeah. In terms of security and things. And, yeah, much easier than Morgan Hill, for sure. Morgan Hill does have zones, right? And certain zones, like 3rd Street, very expensive, have their own set of regulations, that's like a book bit. Yeah, so.
Okay. Council member Hilton.
Thank you. Victoria, great, great report, and I completely understand that you wanna standardize this. I know you took this on, and, and I'd wanna standardize it too, so I appreciate that. And I appreciate all the options. I too am, I'm in agreement, no more fees. If anything, I think we should be recovering, we should be absorbing all the fees. I think that, that if you were to do an economic impact of all those people down there, whether it's, you know, they're coming in before or after the event, staying in our hotels and that kinda stuff, trying to drive those overnight stays, I think that we get a really good economic impact and return on our investment of processing those. I think it will also turn away many of those smaller nonprofits that maybe just wanna close down 5th Street for less of an impact and have to pay the same fees as someone who draws it bigger and maybe is charging for their events versus those that, that say it's free, like, just, just come please and come enjoy our businesses. When you come back, I'd like to see if you could also enter in some type of formula for the economic impact. Doesn't have to be, you know, who brought what money back, but just sort of like a generic, hey, if you have this many people, this is the impact on there. So I wouldn't be in favor of having staff do the barricades and that kinda stuff. I, I, I do agree with you, I think it'd be perfectly fine to set a 60 days minimum. If you wanted to go longer, I'd say that's up to you, and I'd support you. You're the one that's processing it. And, and lastly, all these, the event templates, event zones, training and outreach, go for it. I'm fully in support of that. I think it would make it a lot easier, a lot more transparent, and probably easier for you and anybody else in any department reviewing them. Thank you.
Council member Klein.
Thank you, Victoria, for your, your work. And I know there seems to be, and I've been involved in this process of trying to get a permit and, and all that goes with that, plus working with other nonprofits. And it is, it's tended to be a moving target in trying to understand cost. I, I'm of the opinion, having a schedule of values and, and like the city doing the traffic study based on whatever that event is, or if you're having different events, you develop a traffic study based on that size of event and how, you know, that costs. So having a schedule of values for all the different types of things you have, you know, it, it helps us spread that cost and makes it easier to afford if, if we go that route. I think that needs to be built into that. I know in looking at, you know, the events, downtown events are really uncontrolled events, right? I was talking to someone about that. And you, it's, it's not ticketed, and really, anyone can come to those events. And we see the numbers with the three, the car show, Tamal, and the holiday parade, that's the given day, but you have that flow, you don't really control it because you're not charging tickets for people to come in. Whereas a controlled environment, like say the rodeo, you know, they had a certain amount of tickets that they sold, and then it was sold out. You have volunteers working, but essentially you have that. So looking at those two types, I'd like to at least have you look at, you know, how, you know, number one, insurance, because, you know, it, it's kinda funny, and I, I bring this up because the Garlic Festival was mentioned in there, about insurance and, and the rates. And we look at the festival, even though it's been five years, and there, it was a million plus the 5 million excess, but the festival evolving into something smaller, would that still be judged as that big event? Because I think that's the challenge for, for, for different groups, but I know specifically for that and how it's looked at, from city, cities doing all that. So I'd like to see a, a more balanced approach to that, especially groups like the Garlic Festival, who's been involved with the big event, looking at smaller, are they gonna be looked at in the same way? So just how we judge that and how we work through that, understanding of that. So that was just some of my thoughts with that there.
Thank you.
Everyone else has talked, but that's kinda some of my thoughts on that.
Thank you. Okay, so, yeah, thank you, because I'd like to go. Yeah, I haven't said anything yet. Okay, I'm not gonna take this in any particular order, I'm just going to express what I, what I would like to see staff come back with, and then we're gonna have to see what the, what the council supports. So with respect to looking at the paragraph on modify insurance requirements for special events, I certainly would like to see a definition from staff of what constitutes a small event in terms of number of attendees, what constitutes a moderate event, and what constitutes a large event in terms of attendees. And I realize that number of attendees is not the sole criteria for insurance. It isn't just about having like 12,000 people at a parade. We start with identifying those numbers, but when it comes to insurance and everything, everything else that goes along with the event, we have to look at the rest of the criteria, which is, is this just an event that's for an hour or two? Is this an event that's a full day? Is this an event that's for two full days? That's another single criteria. Another criteria is, is the event itself selling alcohol, right? Not the businesses that might be indoors, but the event itself, is there alcohol? That, that is a criteria that affects insurance. The use of automobiles like you have in here, how are automobiles used in the need for this event? So I, I'm suggesting that the, that we, that we have very specific criteria, and we let ourselves and of course the public know, what is that specific criteria that triggers risk? So that everybody can know what those things are, what are those contributory factors? Okay, then when it comes to notifications, council member Armandares kind of alluded to this, and I, I don't know what the best way of notifications is or not, but I would like to see staff come back and tell us what, based on your experience, what is the best way to notify? Because I know that sending out something in the mail, a lot of people will say they never saw it, they never got it. You don't know who's getting the mail, is it going to the tenant, is it going to the property owner, is it, who's, so it's, it's hard. I appreciate the fact that getting signatures is the best way to have an acknowledgement that people know, but in my, in just the last two years of my tenure here as mayor, the num, and maybe it's because the number of events have grown and most of them are downtown, the number of residents that have been complaining to me about why is it that they don't know, they don't have a chance to say, it's too much, that sort of thing. I get that from some of the businesses downtown too, but I know they know. The residents, I'm not sure know. And so while I too support all, bringing the life and the people and all this stuff, I do think that the number of them does need to be considered for the impacts on those that are there and maybe don't see this as a benefit. We can still have events, but I'm, I'm gonna assume that the 36 number is correct, I mean, council member Marks is questioning that. But again, these are things we can all consider when stuff comes out. Maybe we limit the number of special events in a certain location or things like that. But specifics as to what each of those criterias would be, would be very helpful.
Maybe, I was just thinking about what you said about residents, and I think the issue with, is access to the, right, because they live above the buildings, a lot of that is access.
I just wanna make sure that they are informed. They should be notified somehow, and how that is, how we're gonna succeed in that, I don't know, and what's reasonable and not reasonable is what I'm asking come back to us.
Yeah, because at least to them parking still, and then getting, you know, the threat of being towed, and nobody likes to tow anyone.
Well, some, I, I don't wanna have a back and forth here, I'm just saying, some of the residents who have complained to me say their, their driveways get blocked, people are looking for parking and they don't park properly, and so to some people, it is a frustration. That's all I'm saying. To some people, it's a frustration, to others, it's a good time. So it's, you know, you just, I, I'm, we're, we're here to strike balance, right? We need, we need the balance. Okay, I would like, my, anyway, my, would be that staff comes back with a full fee structure of what it costs. I think we should all know where staff time is going, whether or not we decide to use general fund money when we do the budgeting, if, if there is general fund money. We gotta be careful about benefiting just a particular part of town, and not that we have businesses all over town, not just in a three-block section of Gilroy. So that's a separate subject when council is budgeting, but I think it's important for us to be aware of what those costs are and make conscious decisions to subsidize, right? If that's what we're gonna do. So I would like that to come, to, to come back. And lastly, when it comes to the barricades, I had a question on the barricades. When you say, when you use the term barricade, because I thought that at least under our current policy, when somebody applies for a special events permit, that the, the barricades are released to the applicant of that special event, no? Has that changed, or is that, was that never the case?
I can't speak to whether it was never the case or not, but I do believe on, I do know on our special events application, we do list a couple of vendors who are able to provide those barricades. In recent years, our public works team has been doing the traffic control for events themselves, not releasing the barricades to specific event organizers.
You wanna answer that, Jimmy? Okay.
Thank you, Matt Abear.
Yeah.
The barricades are probably one of the largest sore spots for staff because in many instances, volunteers put A-frames out in hopes that that will stop a vehicle. And so we got to the point where we just couldn't rely on these groups, and I'm not blaming them because they don't know what they're doing. They, they don't know how to barricade a, a road. So we've been absorbing that cost as a city, having public works crews with their trucks out there blocking the road, so that way, nobody can drive through. So that's something we made an adjustment for, we haven't charged people for that, but it's something we have to think about long-term, and we wanna get the volunteers out of that business. They're, they're just not good at it. There's too much at risk for us not to do it.
So I'm, I'm asking though about, do you wanna respond to that? Sorry.
Yeah, I can add, the barricade should be sufficient enough to stop a vehicle driving at 35 miles per hour, and that's something that our police department has highly recommended based off of the standards of vehicle incursion barriers and what the speed rating is there.
Okay, so when I see the word barricades in this report, you don't mean the city A-frame ones that say City of Gilroy on them?
Right.
Because that is what I have learned to define as a barricade. No.
And, and that's, that's the common thinking of a lot of our volunteers and these event organizers.
No, but they say City of Gilroy on them. The volunteers aren't getting them.
Those are A-frames.
Coming from the city.
Right. So those are A-frames. When we're talking barricading, we're talking about the utility trucks that are being placed at the end to stop a vehicle.
Okay, so we are already no longer giving to people our city A-frame, City of Gilroy stamped barricades?
Not in the last year. Those have been set up by our public works team.
Okay, so that can't happen already. Good.
It is, it is currently happening, where our team goes out and sets them up.
Right, not somebody else.
Correct.
Okay, because I know we've had events before where people are given these barricades, and they either are or are not used properly. Okay, so when you say barricades here, then we're just talking about whether or not staff bears that cost. So, so, okay, so then I would, I would suggest that we have staff, that part of what comes back from staff is what cost, what, what cost does this add? Not just, not to the applicant, because we haven't decided that yet, guys. That's the fee structure that we have to decide. But again, I think we should just know what those costs are so that we can make a decision accordingly. So I would ask that that be made known to us, what, if that needs to. Because I, I know, I saw our public works truck at Downtown Live, right? And he was parked there the whole time, standing there by the truck the entire time. And so the truck and the person, right there, at just that one spot. And that was just the one spot, so I, I get it.
Thank you.
Okay. Council member Tovar, you have another question?
Yeah, thank you. Victoria, earlier when I kinda mentioned kinda where we're currently at in regards to event templates and, you know, and it seems like we're, you know, we're kind of looking in that direction, right? The reason why I asked it, because, and the reason why I kinda brought up where we as a city, and this is to my fellow council members, is should invest in this, because if you look, and I don't know if you've looked at other cities, they, most of the cities have community event grant programs, right? Saratoga, Santa Clara, San Jose, Newport, Santa Cruz, I don't know if we've looked at what they have, some of these grants or some of these programs will fund up to $10,000 per event, right? Whatever the event is. I think coming back with information like that, saying this is what, you know, costs, whatever it may be, right? So we can be able to work with our groups out there and say, look, this is a possible grant program. In addition also, and I'm always harping on, are we applying for external grants? There are also external grants out that, that can pay, there's one out there, the grant for California individuals, groups, organizations, entities for public events that benefit a city and community that will fund up to $2,000 per event. You know, maybe one of the things we, we do is we start applying to these grants and/or we start to educate these groups on how to go about applying for these grants. Because again, my concern is the higher the cost, the less events that we're gonna have, right? But if we can find creative ways of working with different groups saying, we're gonna create a program, but in addition, we're gonna give you a list of external grants for you to, to, to apply for, I think that we're helping groups out and we're not just leaving it all on them. So it's something I would ask that we consider, we look at, because I don't, I don't expect that the city would take the full burden of the cost, but if we can educate, supply people with potential grant funding, I think that would be beneficial to the groups as well.
Thank you. Council member Klein.
Yeah, just on the process, as far as the application process, if we're streamlining, can that also be something to look at? Maybe all, you know, everyone's together in a room going through that application and checking off everything to make sure everything's there, but scheduling that where everyone's together on that with your staff time? I, I don't know. If you're streamlining, can you also look at streamlining that process?
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have one more thing, and then we'll go to public comment too, with regard to templates and zones, okay? I personally like both of those ideas. I just think that when it comes to zones, there absolutely needs to be a limit on the number, because the people and businesses in those zones are then gonna be the ones that are, you know, always, always bearing what, whatever comes with, with events. Some may love it, some may not, you know, that's fine. But I think that just needs to be clear, there needs to be a limit, and that will be for the council to decide, I understand. But I am asking that with what you come back with, that you maybe make a suggestion as to what, what that should be. And then with respect to templates, I think that would be great too. That makes it so much easier for people to the extent that a lot of these events can be a checklist, you know, that make it easier for people to know what to do. Okay, I'm gonna go to public comment. I see two, so I'm opening, opening public comment, and I'm gonna, Jeff Orth and Danny Mitchell. You are one after the other. You could please be prepared.
All right, first of all, I want to thank you very much, council, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I applaud the fact that you believe that Gilroy needs to be a destination location and that's why you're developing things in Gilroy Gardens and Shark Ice and all these other things. And downtown is one of those elements in creating a destination location. And the Gilroy Downtown Business Association is taking it very seriously on wanting to have this to be a place that feels safe, clean, inviting, and a place where people want to come down with their families or kids or dogs, that sort of thing. And the GBA has been very successful at getting people to discover the downtown and in some cases even rediscovering the downtown. People who have been disillusioned and haven't been to downtown for a while have found a reason to come back. The problem is the cost of these events is written dramatically, I mean, really dramatically, due largely to changes in the permitting process, but not exclusively to the, just the permitting process. I'll give you just one example, there's several, but I'll give you just one. And one is the cost of security. Last year, we had our Downtown Lives and we had two security guards at each event. We never had an instance, we never had a fight, we had nothing. This year, we had 10 events, we had two security guards and four police officers. So that escalated my daily cost to just south of $1,500. So between that and just some of the additional permitting costs, you effectively cut the profit that the Downtown Live would make in half, just due to costs. What we're doing is we're trying to get people to, we're raising this money for a very important purpose, to get people to come down, to discover the downtown, to market the business, help drive people to our local businesses. One of the interesting phenomena that happened last year, and we'll see if it happens against this year. Downtown Live, we had eight concerts. And on the day that would have been the ninth concert, the, oh, and each one of those eight concerts, obviously the business showed a market increase in business. All the downtown business had a market increase in business. The two following Thursdays, they also had a market increase in business when there wasn't a concert. Effectively, we're training people to understand this is a good place to come. We're currently struggling right now as an organization because we're, because of the expenses. And we're helping support organizations like the Tamal Festival and stuff like that. All the other events, or most of the other events going down there, the GBA is supporting. And so before I run out of town, I want to, run out of time, I just want to tell you how much I'm grateful to you. I'm grateful for the discussion that you just had. I'm grateful for people like Tom Klein and Carol Marks who turn out and actually volunteer at the events. Because I got to tell you, when you come out, it really makes a difference. I want to thank Jimmy and I want to thank Victoria for taking us through a very difficult process and being very understanding and working with us. Thank you.
All right, Danny Mitchell and then Maria Aguilar.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Danny Mitchell, CFO, I guess, CEO, yes, I am now, and President of the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce. I would like to have the council consider maybe bringing to the table some of these representatives of these groups that are putting on these special events. I know the Car Shield Group, the Downtown Parade, Christmas Parade each year, and of course, the Downtown Business Association Group. If they could have a say maybe in some of these discussions and those decisions that are being made for as to what the council may consider doing. This might help them better understand fees that may be absorbed by them as well as their understanding what the city is willing to continue to, to absorb as well as their willingness to allow these and the guidelines that are set up. If we have a seat at the table with that and a strong representation, I think you'll find that they'll all come away with a better understanding and hopefully be able to continue with their special events. So we ask for the seat at the table consideration. Thank you.
Thanks. I would have thought more people would be here tonight, but anyway, Maria, go ahead.
I just wondered, observation, how come law friend that was submitted from your report?
Okay, no other public comments? All right, then closing public comment and it's coming back to city council. Any further comments? Because if, if not, I don't, do you, do you feel like you got too mu, can you handle all the information that you got? Because I kind of feel like what everybody said is useful, I mean, is helpful.
Yes, absolutely. I will re-watch this council meeting and make sure I capture all of the information and work with Jimmy.
Sorry, yeah, because what I meant is, are we not being clear? Do you need a majority for something? That's what I meant.
I, I think at this point, a lot of what council said helps us focus on what we're hearing. And the one thing that I heard tonight that I, we did not know is, did you want to invest in these events? Because we, you already are. We're not getting hardly anything back, cost recovery, and hearing from some of you, that's okay. So let's start there. Let's start with what these events are costing the city, what they're bringing in, and what the net economic impact is. Some of the other stuff here is pretty easy, I think. And so I think we have plenty of direction. We, we, we know about insurance, we have that almost ready to go. So I think we should do another update with you very shortly about what we found out and then kind of focus on the high-level policy about what's the cost recovery plan here? And then get into some more of the details about how many events, what zone should be what. But I think that would be a good start and I think we have plenty to do that.
Okay, because I do think the number of events is, is critical because the more events we do, the more staff time is going into them all. Yeah, and, and we have to remember that we are here for the entire city, not just for a particular, not just for certain businesses. Yeah, okay? All right, enough said on that. 10.3, food truck ordinance. Victoria, that's you as well, is it not?
That's me again.
Okay.
All right, so, let's see. All right, good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. Victoria Valencia, Economic Development Manager here tonight to, to introduce and discuss the food truck ordinances and seek council direction regarding updating the mobile food vendor ordinance, establishing permit fees, and potentially identifying some permitted zones. At the December 11th council meeting, council directed staff to review food truck ordinances from Hollister, Modesto and Morgan Hill, examine flexible locations and specific places for food trucks to operate, and review time restrictions, simplified permit processes, and minimal licensing fees. Mobile vending, including mobile food trucks, currently has regulations in Gilroy City Code Chapter 16A. A mobile vending facility is defined as any portable container, pushcart, stand, vehicle or wagon used for displaying, selling or offering for sale any food, goods or services. The current regulation requires mobile vendors to relocate at least 100 feet every 10 minutes. The current regulation also prohibits mobile vending facilities from operating in commercial zoning districts, C1 neighborhood commercial, C2 central commercial, and C3 shopping center commercial. City of Gilroy does have a mobile vendor permit application. The current fee is $158 for new applicants with an annual renewal of $82. And there is a business license fee of $100 annually. Some of, going back to where mobile vendors cannot locate, they cannot locate on private property without property owner approval or near elementary and junior high schools. All right, before we go into that, there are approximately 25 food trucks that have been observed frequent, frequenting downtown. 20 of these are approved to operate in Santa Clara County. The other five may either be unpermitted or may hold a health permit in a neighboring county. Staff reviewed and compared ordinances and guidelines from three cities, Morgan Hill, Hollister and Modesto, with the focus being on time limits, permits required and operating areas. The regulations between the three share some similar, some similarities such as requiring business licenses, California seller's permits and health permits. However, key differences include operating locations and restrictions. Morgan Hill does not have a food vendor ordinance. Instead, they have an operations guideline for public streets and right-ofways. There are private property restrictions that require written consent from the property owner. And the restrictions to private property include no operation on vacant lots and they can't operate adjacent to any single-family homes or duplexes. The business license in Morgan Hill is $45 annually and they also require that California seller's permit, insurance, Santa Clara County health permit and any applicable federal, state or local licenses. Here are quite a few operational limits that are from City of Morgan Hill. Vendors are limited to 30 minutes per location and they must move at least 300 feet every 30 minutes. And their hours are limited to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. They can't obstruct sidewalks or traffic. And they're prohibited from operating on sidewalks or within 25 feet of fire lanes or no parking zones. They must stay at least 100 feet away from public transit signs, maintain a clean vending area, providing waste containers, and they must store waste properly. And they also must operate at least 300 feet away from public schools, buildings, parks, playgrounds or city administrative buildings and other mobile vendors unless separated by a public street. Going back to that time limit, there is one exception. If a food truck is invited by a business and they're adding tables and chairs encroaching into the public right-ofway, the business has to secure an outdoor dining permit and encroachment permit and that fee is $716.10 every seven years. Hollister has separate regulations for short-term, long-term and developed private property operations. Short-term, you can be there up to 1 hour and 59 minutes at one location. They have to wait at least four hours before they can return to that location. They have to move at least one block between that time. They're allowed to operate 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. in residential zones. All other zones are 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Long-term operations are allowed up to four hours at a location and they're permitted only in specific commercial and industrial manufacturing zones. They have the same operating hours as the short-term operations. In developed private property areas, food trucks are permitted in all zones except residential. The site has to be legally developed with established use and parking and the operating hours are 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. or concurrent with the established business hours. And that requires a written agreement to operate. Their business license fee is $72 annually. They require those same licenses, California seller's permit, health permit, et cetera. Some additional requirements. The food trucks need to have an authorization for use of restroom facilities and in some cases bonding is required. Food trucks are allowed only on legally established parallel parking and sales from mobile vendors parked on the street must face the sidewalk. They're prohibited from operating within 1,000 feet of any public or private school or preschool between 7:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. And Modesto does not allow any mobile vendors unless they are operating on private property and the property must be paved or an all-weather surface. And the property owner pays a mobile food facility permit application review fee of $580. And then the mobile vendors are required to obtain a business license of $154 annually. They have to have a formal agreement for use of properly operating restrooms within 200 feet of their operations, that California seller's permit and a health permit. And excuse the highlight there. The City of Gilroy does have a mobile vendor application processed through our police department. That fee is $158 initially and $82 for renewal. Business license fee is actually $100 annually. This $40 base and $40 increment, increase based on gross profit or gross receipts was related to a different line item on our fee schedule, so I apologize for that. There are currently seven approved mobile vendors. The county health permits related to mobile vendors, the permit ranges from $235 to $863 depending on the type of service. There are no food prep, which would be like your ice cream trucks, to full-service food prep like the ones we're seeing around town. There's also a separate plan check fee that begins at $595 and it goes up to $1,190. There are also additional inspections and other permitting requirements like fire suppression, inspection fees and things of that nature. The county also has some standard conditions. If a food truck is parked longer than one hour at any location, a readily available toilet and hand washing facility must be within 200 feet of the facility. And for compact mobile food operations, there must be enough employees to alternate restroom usage. A wall-mounted minimum 10 B.C. rated approved fire extinguisher is required. And identification needs to be permanently affixed on the consumer side and letters and numbers must contrast with the background. These are what a couple of the county permits look like. So this green one over here, that's the County of Santa Clara. That is their DEH placard and this must be in public view. And it has the county where it was issued, the permit number, the year the permit will expire and the month that it expires. This is a State of California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD. Notice that needs to be on all mobile food vendors that have people in them, which would apply to food trucks. The food trucks are also required to have a valid food safety manager certificate and copies of food handler cards for anyone that's on the food truck. That DEH placard and permit posted in public view, copy of their most recent inspection. And their fire suppression system also requires that by annual inspection. Fire extinguishers require their annual inspection. They have to have a certain class of fire extinguisher for grease. The requirement for the generator exhaust to be directed away from consumers and food handlers. And then there's that HCD insignia that needs to be affixed to the vehicle. Council also asked staff to look at locations in, in the downtown area that food trucks could, could park in. A couple of considerations. There's a safety standard for food truck operations. Food trucks can only park parallel to the sidewalk and curb. Most food trucks only open on the right side, which could eliminate some parking areas. And our downtown parking management plan recommends food trucks be allowed on less busy side streets perpendicular to Monterey Street to minimize vehicle congestion or potential pedestrian conflicts from queuing. And it also recommends leasing parking spaces and including requirements such as cleanliness, hours of operation and safety provisions. So here are a couple of proposed locations based on their proximity to the downtown area as well as their usage. These letters are used for reference only and don't represent any sort of preference to any of these spaces. A is that Fifth and Monterey Gardner parking lot between Gardner Health and Seamap. There are 24 to 26 parking spaces there. There is this curb right around here, which would limit only 18 parking spaces in that front half. There's also Horn Line Court, which is over here next to the new Camino Coffee. There are about 18 to 20 parking spaces there. And the new gourmet parking lot on Seventh and Eagleberry has about 140 spaces. There is also the railroad street lot, which is near the Car Boxing Center, right up here, and that has 60 spaces. And then the Fifth and Eagleberry Street Lot behind the chamber is about 60 to 70 spaces. The Fourth Street Lot was not considered just because there are private property owners on either side of the city lot that would be impacted. All right, so next steps. If council provides direction, staff will pursue updating the mobile food vendor ordinance and draft regulations for permits and standards for mobile vendors. Or council can decline to direct staff to update the regulations and identify another method, possibly by resolution or other regulatory document to regulate mobile vending. And fiscal impact, none at this time, but there may be impacts based on direction received from council. Staff will analyze the fiscal impacts and include it as part of the report. And then public outreach for this particular item was done through informal communication with business owners, food truck owners, residents. And if staff directs, or if council directs staff to draft some guidelines, then we could have community meetings, study sessions and those sorts of things to engage the public. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so going to council first, Councilmember Armandares.
Thank you, thank you, Victoria. This ordinance would, this ordinance would apply to, or anything we establish would apply to the entire city. This ordinance would, this ordinance would apply to, or anything we establish would apply to the entire city, right? Not just downtown?
Correct.
Did you find that Morgan Hill, Hollister, Modesto, those are citywide ordinances as well?
They are.
Thank you. And then, did any of them have language about not obstructing existing brick-and-mortar restaurants?
No, not that I came across.
Was there any language at all about, okay?
No, I believe the state law, you have to be very specific about the things you can and can't regulate. And I believe, based off of the sidewalk vending, that that was something that could not be included in regulations.
Except for safety reasons, sorry?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Marks?
Yes, I do, I am in favor of a food truck ordinance. And I would like to suggest that we look at the Gardner parking lot, where the food trucks can park there in a circle, and it's centrally located. People can take their food and walk to whatever tap room or business that they want to go. Or if there were tables there, they could sit down in the center and have dinner there. I am not in favor of any food truck taking up parking places downtown, because I feel that a food truck parked in front of a business is benefiting the business and not benefiting any other business, and it's taking away from the other businesses. So I would suggest a parking lot that is feasible to all the businesses located down there.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Victoria. Great job. Trying to, in my feedback, when I'm talking with businesses, obviously, we have a lot of tap houses, breweries, hopefully I said that correct, that don't offer food, right? And having them kind of on the side streets kind of takes away from what they're trying to do, right? So again, I think, and I think it's on here, you have the parking lot, which I was going to mention, and thank you, Councilmember Marks, the parking lot next to Gardner Health Clinic, right? I mean, that's a central location. I understand it's citywide, but I think for downtown, that might be very beneficial for our businesses. In addition, I believe the City of San Jose does where they allow food trucks for up to two hours. Anything longer than two hours, all the permits and everything is required, right? So it's, I'm not sure if you've researched them.
Yeah, they could have some other regulations, but their code actually limits food trucks to 10 minutes as well.
10, yeah. So I mean, again, I'm looking at, obviously, if there's a creative way, obviously, that we can attract people for a very shorter amount of time, not three, four, five hours, and it's centrally located, I think that's going to help our businesses, right? Because I think we all know there's a lot of residents saying, you know, we need this, or we need that, we need these different types of food. But by offering a central location there with flexibility, I think it's going to benefit our businesses. Because again, several of them don't offer food. And so, yeah, I just would say, just, let's really take a look at that location, because I think it's going to be beneficial.
All right, Councilmember Klein?
Yeah, I, I feel there shouldn't be any food trucks on Monterey. I fully agree with that. And so, is it that parking lot, is it on Eagleberry, behind the whole Gourmet Alley, between Fifth and Sixth? That's ideal there, because what that presents in wanting traffic to go through Gourmet Alley, that's the whole idea of what we're doing with that. So I want to look at all those options and not just be centered on one. And we all have our own opinion of that. But I like the idea of focusing, and maybe they're on the street because of the way they face, and it still allows your parking, so, just a thought.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. I'm fine with food trucks on Monterey Road. I don't have any problem with that. But if we are going to go towards closing off that Gardner Healthcare parking lot, I would like for you to come back with feedback from those individuals that, that invite the food trucks. Because I know we're not in the business of inviting food trucks, right? We're not going to do that. And it's those businesses that have the relationships with these food trucks that invite them to come to their establishment, and then they rely on cross-posting so that they can sell out and invite people in. So if, if we're going to eliminate Monterey Road as food trucks, we're going to, if, if they don't have a plan, because we don't have a plan. If they don't have a plan, there's not going to be more food trucks. Because nobody's going to come do this process on their own and go to a parking lot. So if we are going to go down that road, I would really appreciate that when you come back to have that feedback. Like, are you guys going to still organize this and have them come over there? Or are you just not going to organize it at all? Because if they're not going to organize it, I don't think we need to go down this path. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Armendaras?
I had a follow-up question. Would, creating a designated space and time for food trucks, wouldn't that also be precluded by state law? Because we don't apply that to restaurants in terms of zoning or in ordinance, right? We don't regulate restaurants as to where they can be located?
Are you thinking, Andy?
We have, but there are, there are food court places that have food trucks, certainly. And so I don't know the answer to your question. We can look, we can look into it. I think there must be a way that it could be done, you'd think.
Well, food trucks are oversized for Monterey Street.
Yeah. I mean, it's a, it's a common thing in, in some other cities and certainly in other states, too. So I'll have to check the state law and find the answer to that question.
Yeah, thank you. That would be helpful.
But it would seem to me, I keep talking here, but we could create a, a special zone, you know, if we worked at that. I don't think there's a state law precaution, but let me check, okay?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be in favor of certain locations where the food trucks are allowed. And yeah, not, not where they can be in front of another business that did not ask them to be there. You know, or a restaurant that opens up into outdoor dining that is now right in front of a food truck or the queue for a food truck. So that's, that's the problem, again, is the balance between the benefiting establishment that has asked the food truck to be there and the ones that don't benefit from it. So anyway, for, for me, it would be about a location. I do think the Gardner lot and possibly the Fifth Street, Eagleberry, the one that would be adjacent to Gourmet Alley, would be the two places adjacent to Gourmet Alley. You hopefully are going to have outdoor seating. We don't know yet what, what businesses adjacent to that alley will do. But that is, those are very centrally located places and very easy for people to then get to, wherever it is they want to go, even if it's to a place that doesn't serve food.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, can I ask a quick follow-up question?
Yeah.
Victoria, one of the things I think several cities do, I mean, in, in kind of expanding this conversation where, because one of the requirements, obviously, are hand-washing stations and restrooms, right? Where when a restaurant or business sponsors this truck, then they're required to allow folks to use their restrooms and all that stuff. So I think if, whichever direction we go, if we're going to have sponsors, they should know that that's part of the requirements. That, again, if they're going to sponsor somebody, that those individuals that are attending can and should be using their, their restrooms, because again, that's part of what, one of the requirements.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I will open the public comment period. One speaker? Yeah, Ron Kirkish, you are the one speaker. I, I'm surprised that there aren't more people here participating in the meeting, but okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, Mayor and Council and community. About a week ago, I was inside of Nob Hill, and one of the downtown business owners, very influential, who's invested a lot of money into our company chewed my air for about 20 minutes about this issue. And he basically doesn't want any of these things on Monterey. He says, you know, part of my business is food servers. And when times are tough, slow, and I don't have any customers doing my other business, I, I go out to other, you know, like these bars and stuff like that, and I give them my menus. And I say, just tell your customers that I can, if they want to order a hamburger or something from me, I can get it ready for five, in five minutes for them. He goes, it's just not fair. These food truck businesses come in, they don't have any money in the game, and they're stealing from me. That's how he feels. And I'm sure there's other food service people downtown, so they don't want them on Monterey. They, it's not a fair competition. He did say that if they can find a different location for them, that's fine. And I think that's one way we're looking at it. But as far as being on Monterey, you know, talk to your business people. They don't want them. They, they need that business, just as, maybe more so than the other company, the food vendors. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no other public comments, huh? None of the other businesses, nobody. Yeah. Okay, closing public comment, and it comes back to council. Again, is there any more that we need to say, or is everybody kind of clear with the direction? Yeah. I, I think the majority direction was for designated space. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, that's, I see at least four. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 11, we have none. Item 12, Jimmy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two quick reports. We had a resident a few weeks ago ask about the Monterey Gateway Senior Hop Crosswalk. And she was obviously frustrated for how long it was taking, and certainly that, that is the case. But I want to remind council and the public that this is a grant-funded project. We received $350,000 from the federal government through Representative Lofgren's office, and then another $350 from the State of California through John Laird's office. So when you get free money from the feds in the state, it takes quite a long time to actually get it in hand. We have been notified since the notice to proceed last January, and we don't expect construction to begin until at least the middle of 2025. It's free money, and you have to be patient, and you have to know that if you're getting it. And what's ironic about some of these grants is that even when you receive them, you have to apply for them like you haven't received them. So when we got the grant through Representative Lofgren's, it goes through a certain federal agency. You have to apply with them even though you've been told you get the money. So it's, it's a really long process, but it's good money to have, and it'd be very difficult to identify a funding source for this project otherwise. So there is a good reason why it's taken so long, and it's just we're waiting on the money. The second report, I just want to give you a real quick year-end update. We're closed for the summer session of our aquatics program. It was very busy at Christopher High School. There was a 40% increase compared to last year in the number of participants signed up for swim lessons. Almost 2,000 kids, I think they're mostly kids, maybe a few adults in there, received lessons compared to just over 1,000. So that's great to get all these folks, you know, learning how to swim. The recreation swim time also increased from the previous year. And this summer, about 3,600 participants were in that program, a 30% increase from 2023. And the last day that the pool will be open for the season is September 1st, so you got a, you got a couple of weeks left if you want to get out there. And then lastly, the summer camp update. In 2023, the Recreation Department served 551 summer campers. This year, 839. So a 35% increase from the previous year. Our utilization is going up. People are participating in our programs. And then, the first time since 2019, the Gilroy Gardens Summer Day Camp restarted, and we had 143 campers enrolled out there as well. So a lot of positive things going on in our Recreation Department. I want to thank Adam Henig and all the staff who are out there all summer long with these kids and giving them something to do and, and getting them ready to go back to school, which they do Wednesday in Gilroy.
Yay.
So thank you. That was my report.
Those days seem so long ago, having little kids. All right, Andy, your report?
No, I have no report, but I will read the closed session agenda, item 14.
All right, thank you.
As a single closed-session conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 5495.6.8, Gilroy City Code 17A8, properties on the 10th Street Bridge with APNs given in the agenda, Thomas Luchessa Bridge, similarly, APNs are given, new fire station, APNs are given. Negotiators are Jimmy Forbes, City Administrator, other parties in negotiations, John M. Feliz Glen Loma Corporation. Under negotiation is price in terms of payment. So the next step is to seek, ask if there is public comment. We do not have to take a vote to go into closed session, but once in closed session, we have to take a vote to stay in closed session. And that would be a reportable action, to be reported at the end.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay.
Mayor, could I ask a question? Sorry.
Sure.
I just want to make sure, if we're done with that report?
It's not a report. We're going into closed session.
Oh, got it. Well, did we ask if there was a future council-initiated agenda items? Did we skip that?
No, I didn't skip it. There, you have to have had that. Yeah, there aren't none. They have to be previously submitted.
Got it, okay.
Right? That's the policy.
Under the policy.
Yeah, so if there's nothing there, then that means nobody submitted anything. Okay, all right, so we are 8:24. Do I need to mark that time?
Yeah, at 8:24, we're, 8:25, we're now adjourned to closed session.
Okay.